Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023 Tom Water City Council meeting. And I will go ahead and call for roll call.
Councilmember Leeta Dahlhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Tworthout. And she is excused.
Yes, she is excused this evening.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Charlie Schneider.
Present.
Mayor W. Sullivan.
I am here. And next we will do the pledge, if you will follow me for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have three special items this evening. The first one is the proclamation for Tom Water Bike Month, May 23, 2023. And Peter Agabi will go ahead and read that proclamation.
Proclamation, whereas bicycling is one of the most efficient forms of transportation ever invented, and it's a mode of transportation where it's related to urban environment, where trips are short in length and overly congested or difficult and costly to respond, and whereas transportation accounts for about half of carbon dioxide emission from fossil fuel in Washington State, which adds to the problem of climate change. And whereas bicycle commuting reduces energy consumption, pollution, and congestion. And whereas bicycling make people healthier and more productive, prevents chronic diseases, through physical activities, improve cardiovascular health, reduces stress, and supports physical, emotional, and mental well-being. And whereas the National Nonprofit Bicycle Profit and Education Association, the League of American Bicyclists, have declared the month of May to be National Bike Month for each of the last sixty days, sixty-six years, and has done so again in 2023. And whereas the city of Tom Water supports alternative to inefficient drive-alone trips, particularly for travel around the city by building bicycle facilities and participating in the wheel option commute trips reduction campaign. And whereas intercity transit, which many sponsors, including local and regional business and organizations, is hosting the Thirty-Six Annual Bicycle Community Challenge during the month of May, 2023. Now therefore, Debbie Sullivan, the mayor of the city of Tom Water, do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2023 Bicycle Month. In the city of Tom Water, in the recognition of National Bike Month and Clay Air Month, she encourages citizens to put forth their best effort to reduce single-occupant motor vehicle trips to reduce air pollution, energy consumption, and traffic congestion. Signed in the city of Tom Water by Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the city of Tom Water. All right.
Great, thank you. We have Duncan Green in Zoom, who will... Duncan, I have the hard copy, which I will get to you. And so go ahead and say a few words, and I'm sure that you have some update.
Hi, I think I've got myself unmuted. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Excellent. So yeah, just for the record, in case you don't know me, my name's Duncan Green, and I'm here to represent InterCity Transit and Thurston County Bicycle Community Challenge, which is our local celebration of National Bike Month. And just want to say thank you, Mayor Sullivan and council members, for proclaiming May as Bicycle Month in the city of Tom Water. We're now in our thirty-sixth consecutive year running the Bicycle Community Challenge. It's the longest-running challenge in our region. And so for over three and a half decades, the BCC, as we call it, has been encouraging people to use a bicycle for some of their transportation needs instead of driving. And now for the second year, we've opened the challenge up to our whole community to involve more people and encourage them to enjoy and benefit from all the good things that riding a bike can bring, both individually and as a community. So of course, we hope that recreational bike riding can open the door for some people to try riding for transportation as well. Bicycling for health and fun is beneficial to individual and community health and well-being. And riding a bike to get around only increases those benefits. So this year's theme, and we have a sort of a mascot for the season. It's a great-horned owl, and I'm not sure if I can share my screen to show that to you. But when I turn off my video, you'll see our poster for this year with our great-horned owl mascot. And our theme, who is going to ride today? To bring a little levity to the event, along with all the other benefits of riding a bike. So just a little report on how things are going so far this year. We do a couple of other events before our flagship event in May, which has just started. We do a winter bicycle challenge runs for the month of February. And this year, we had a record number of participants. We had three hundred and seventy-nine people logging rides, riding their bikes throughout the month of February, which was not a very nice month this year. So we were pretty excited about that. And then our kickoff event, which happened a week ago Saturday, on the twenty-second, which is Earth Day, is the Earth Day Market Ride. And we had over a hundred and thirty people show up for that event this year, which was also a really nice turnout. So far, in the Bicycle Community Challenge for May, which just started two days ago, we have almost a hundred people already logging miles, I think maybe two hundred. It's been a little bit since I looked. But anyway, we have quite a good start with around two thousand miles logged already in the first two days of the event. So we're quite happy about that. And we have over forty local and regional sponsors supporting the BCC with everything from prize items, discount coupons, and free passes, support for our events, and also like running their own parallel challenges in-house, and even more. So we have lots of great prizes to offer. We have an amazing community support. So don't disappoint our great-horned owl mascot. Make sure to log your rides in May and help celebrate our thirty-sixth year promoting bicycling in Thurston County. It is quite easy to participate as an individual, or you can join a team if you like. Just go to bccintercitytransit.com and sign up or log into your account if you already have one. And feel free to reach out to me anytime if you have any questions. My email is dgreen@intercitytransit.com. And I'm also happy to answer any questions that you all may have now. And I just want to say thanks.
Great, thank you very much and appreciate it. This is an event that has seemed to have grown significantly over the years, and I think a lot of people look forward to it. And yes, you're right, February was a very wet month. I was surprised that there was as much participation as there was. So that's really great. So thank you, Duncan. I'll get you the written proclamation in the near future. So thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Next item is the Timberland Regional Library State Address. And we have Executive Director Cheryl Haywood. So welcome, Cheryl.
Thank you. Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Oh, you're very quiet now. Can you... Sorry, can you increase your volume?
Yes, can you hear me now?
It's a little better, yeah.
Not good enough? Is it good enough?
Maybe just a touch more.
Okay, so hold on, because I need to go into audio settings.
Sorry.
That's okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Here we go. Great. Good evening, Mayor Sullivan and council members. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you some of the highlights of our 2022 State of the Timberland Regional Library and several 2023 initiatives. As you know, Timberland Regional Library serves five hundred and fifty thousand people in Pacific, Lewis, Grace Harbor, Mason, and Thurston Counties. Trustee Mary Beth Harrington is joining us tonight. She represents us on the Board of Trustees, and she represents Thurston County. Trustee Nicolette Oliver is your second member of Thurston County, representing Thurston County on the Board of Trustees. And your library manager for the Tom Water Timberland Library is Lily Grant. You should have received Timberland Regional Library's 2022 annual report that looks like this. And if you have not, it's also available at trl.org, so you can find out more about the highlights from 2022. I want to take this opportunity to thank the two hundred and forty-five staff across the five-county region for their continued collaboration and can-do-it-ness in 2022. Here are the highlights of the five counties. There was a twelve percent increase in new library open hours at the twenty-nine libraries. And for Tom Water, that means nine to six, Monday through Saturday. We introduced an early literacy activity for ages birth to six and their caregivers, and we call it Grow a Reader, and it's available in English and in Spanish. And it's a physical little book that you can go into any of our libraries and request. It's free, and it helps track the favorite books of the child as the child ages. There was a return to in-person summer library program last summer. We had ninety-six hundred and three people attend six hundred and fifty-two programs across the twenty-nine libraries. We gave out eleven thousand one hundred and nine books were distributed, and people got to walk along fifteen story trails. And these are deconstructed storybooks, picture books, in fifteen different areas across the region. In the fall, we returned to in-person storytimes. Late last year, we introduced iPads for in-library use only. So every library has several of these iPads for people to check out for in-library use to access our content. And we also expanded the library of things to include new stargazing kits, new kitchen tools, new plankton kits, thanks to the Pacific Shellfish Institute, and early math backpacks for ages three through eight with a grant from the Capital STEM Alliance. We also added additional fishing kits and checkout Washington kits. I may have spoken last year to you about expanded access hours. This is a program in several of our libraries where if you have a library card with us and you are fourteen years of age and older, you can request a key card to access the following libraries from seven AM to eight PM daily, including holidays. And so right now, we have this service available at Hootsport, Packwood, Naysale, Ocean Park, MacLeary, and Elma Libraries. In early June, it should be available at the Ilwako Timberland Library, and sometime later this year in the Tenino Timberland Library. We refreshed the MacLeary Library in partnership with the city of MacLeary. We issued five thousand four hundred and twenty-three new library cards during library card signup month in September of last year. And also last year, during that month, we provided six new library card designs. We opened up Timberland's Twenty-Ninth Library, Hawks Prairie Timberland Library, a lucky-day demonstration library with a three-year lease at eighty-two oh five Martin Way. We opened up on Sundays at the West Olympia Timberland Library. We welcomed fifty-three thousand four hundred and eight new patrons and twelve thousand and one new Overdrive patrons. And Overdrive is the online platform to access eBooks, e-audiobooks, and over four thousand e-magazines. Staff answered three thousand four hundred and forty-three emails last year and shatted live seven thousand forty-two times. So when you visit trl.org, Monday through Saturday, nine to five, and you hover your mouse for a few seconds, you will then have a pop-up window with two people behind it available to answer any of your questions regarding our resources and services and programs or any kind of question you may have. So now for the 2023 highlights. The West Olympia Timberland Library at Capitol Mall doubled in size from twelve hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet, and the grand reopening is this Saturday, May sixth, from eleven to one. It continues to be number nine out of twenty-nine in terms of physical circulation, and we see people from all over the district. We will be having a library card contest, the first one in many, many years. It will run from June first to most likely July fifteenth, focusing on birth to five, six, ages six to eleven, and ages twelve to eighteen. And there will be a one winner of each age group, and then the winner will have the card made into a library card for September library card signup month. We installed two electric vehicle charging stations at the Salcom Timberland Library. So if you happen to go onto Highway Twelve, you can stop by that library, use your library card. That too will be hopefully later this year an expanded access hour, so you can go into that library at that point as well. We hope by the end of this year that we actually were very optimistic that we will have a new website that will link to our library catalog in a way that will seem very seamless to the person accessing the library catalog. We're very excited. It's one of the top products for public libraries from a company called Bibliocommons. All libraries continue as connection sites in the work source system across the five-county region, and I continue to be the lead of the One-Stop Committee, which oversees work source and a PacMountain Board Member as well. We are partnering with the Childcare Action Council, Lewis County United Way and Grace Harbor United Way for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which focuses on children birth to five, where they can sign up and receive a free book monthly until the age of five. We are also part of the Thurston County Broadband Action Team, just putting together a digital equity plan, available also at trl.org if you're interested to see what we are doing for digital equity across the region. And lastly, we are putting together, in partnership with the Capital STEM Alliance, a program for free on May twenty-fifth from nine to noon. Its virtual keynote speaker is Commissioner Carolina Mejia, and the topic is "Moving Forward Together: Mental Health and Resilience in the Capital Region; Learn About a Community's Mental and Social Emotional Health and Opportunities for STEM Education and Family Wage Careers." This program will be recorded and shared out. As always, I would like to end on a quote that is relevant to the times we are living in. Libraries will get you through times of no money better than money will get you through times of no libraries. Thank you again for this opportunity to share with you the highlights of all the great work that we're trying to do as quickly as we can. Do you have any questions?
Oh, thank you very much. Is there any questions? I don't see any. And thank you so much. I know that that's a huge region for libraries, and there's a lot of programs and things. Oh, I see that Councilmember Kathy raised her hand. So go ahead.
Thank you, Cheryl, for that report. I always love to hear it. I grew up going to the library every chance I could get and still do. The thing I wanted to ask is, is any of this national uproar and so forth about banning books, how has that impacted you, your work, our libraries?
It's a great question. It has impacted us in a way.
Cheryl, you got quiet again. I'm not sure why.
Oh.
There we go. You're good. Now you're good.
Okay. It has impacted us in the way of us providing more training to our staff, to our Board of Trustees, to review our internal protocols, which are very strong. I knew someone was going to ask me that question. So I went back and I looked. I mean, so far this year, we've had no challenges. And in 2022, we had four. And in 2021, we had two. And when I say that, I mean that somebody wrote out a library comment resource form, and then we received that form, and then we put together a review committee. The committee watches or reads it, and then we put together a letter, and I sign it, and it goes to that person. So very little, but we are definitely watching.
So the books that, you know, have hit the national level news and so forth that have been banned, you have those books in your library?
Well, I haven't gone through every title, but I'm pretty sure we do, because we don't... We're not censoring. No, we have the American Library Association's Bill of Rights Bill, you know, the freedom to read, the freedom to view. Those are all bills that our board adopted over the last thirty years or so. No, we're very... We're ready.
Good, good. Well, that's another tribute to the good work you're doing and how well-trained your librarians are. It's a great system.
I do want to say that we are focusing, one of our three FOKI in our strategic direction is equity, diversity, and inclusion, and that we had our online overdrive collection audited. And by audit, it's like reviewing the titles, right? So one audit we paid for, one we got for free. This was two years ago. And it came back, the results came back that we had one of the top EDI or DEI content in overdrive in the nation.
Wow, congratulations. Well, thank you. Thank you for coming, and thanks for all you're doing for all these communities.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you so much, Cheryl. I really appreciate it. And it's very good information to have updated. So thank you. Next item is a proclamation for Emergency Services Week, May twenty-first to twenty-seventh. And Councilmember Jefferson will be reading that proclamation.
Proclamation, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service that provides life-saving and supporting care to the people of Tom Water twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services team consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas the people of the city of Tom Water recognize the need for and initiated a county-wide emergency medical service system since nineteen seventy-four, EMS has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize, honor, and promote the value of the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers and the Thurston County Medic One slash Emergency Medical Services System by designating EMS Services Week. Now therefore, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the city of Tom Water, do hereby proclaim May twenty-one to twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three Emergency Medical Services Week. And the city of Tom Water encourages all people to join in this observance to recognize those who gave so much of themselves and consistently rise to the challenge for the safety and health of others. Signed in the city of Tom Water, Washington, and recognized on this second day of May in the year 2023.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Jefferson. I believe we have Chief Hurley here, along with several from our fire department. So if you want to say a few things, that would be great. And introduce your people. And then I'll bring the proclamation down in a minute.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. With us tonight, paramedic firefighter Snakevich, paramedic Lieutenant A.C. Bates, and Battalion Chief Brad Ridgeway. The engine crew is out on an emergency medical services call right now, so they're not able to attend tonight. But I wanted to thank you and the council for this recognition. You know, looking back, nineteen seventy-four, the first real career staff at Tom Water Fire Department were paramedics that were part of the Medic One system in nineteen seventy-four. So we've had a long partnership with Thurston County Medic One. Looking back, you know, last year, we ran just over six thousand calls, so that's sixteen or seventeen a day. And the majority of those are emergency medical services calls. And we have approximately fifty certified EMTs and paramedics in the department. And there are eleven of those on duty now every day, serving our community. So much of the other participants in the system were mentioned, from dispatchers to law enforcement to, you know, the hospital staff. It is truly a system. And I feel that we have some of the best EMTs and paramedics anywhere in this system. And I think today, we had a great example of a partnership working with law enforcement on a real challenging call today. Our staff, you know, performed exceptionally well, and we're very proud of them. I'm very proud of them and the service to our community. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Hold on one second. I'll be down. Everybody's taller. So thank you very much. Here's the proclamation. And I see four individuals here, so you all get one of our pencils. I don't think you have one of these. All right, there we go. Thank you. So thank you for everything you do. Okay, thank you very much. Next item is public comment. I have one person signed up in council chambers. Do we have anyone signed up online?
We do not.
We do not have anyone signed up online. So those in council chambers would be Dave Nicandry. If you can come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. That would be great.
Thank you, Mayor Sullivan, member of the councils, members of the council. My name's Dave Nicandry. I live at 505 Fourth Avenue Southwest. I'm building up to a request for information, and I hope I don't have to go through some more formal process for doing that. But I want to tell a story. Now, keep an eye on the clock. I want to tell a story that I actually wrote about in the Wall Street Journal. Actually, before I go any further, I want to thank you for televising your meetings, because someone took a screenshot of me the last time I was here, and I saw how awful my hair looked. I made sure that I was going to have a haircut this time. So I grew up in upstate New York, in the Niagara District, which is one of the great hydroelectric power regions of the country, much like we have here in the state of Washington. All the... Most of the whole... There was a big electrification process in Western New York in the nineteen fifties. Many of the homes were completely remodeled, all electric. Point of that story is that in nineteen fifty-four, when I was six years old, I lived through an epic hurricane, Hurricane Hazel, which blew through in late October of that year. Trees were down everywhere. The point of that story is that although no one in our town, our neighborhood, had lights for three or four days, we, however, had a gas stove. And we were able to cook our own food, heat other people's food, and heat a pot of coffee as the cusp of November was just around the corner. And the lesson of that redundancy was never lost on me. So moving ahead, a couple of years ago, and I can't remember the exact circumstance, I was looking through some city document. And I saw that the city of Tom Water had adopted a policy that would have prohibited new natural gas hookups at some point out in the future. Let me say, by the way, my house is fully electric. I'm happily to be a fully-electric house. But the lesson I learned as a six-year-old is still a lesson I think is very vital today, which is that pushing everything to the electric grid prematurely, in my opinion, not opposed to moving things to the electric grid, but mandating everything go to the electric grid is a dangerous path. One of the great lessons of risk management is redundant systems. And this push that is going on everywhere to eliminate natural gas as a redundant energy system, I think is a very dangerous path. And so all of that is prologue to my question. In light of the Ninth Circuit of Appeals' recent decision that outlawed the city of Berkeley's prohibition on new gas utility hookups, I'm very curious as to what the city of Tom Water's current posture is. I'm very curious as to what the city of Tom Water's current posture is in regard to that. Uh, any engagement you have, are having with the State Building Council regarding its a full elec, total electric mandates and prohibition of new gas hookups? Not expecting an answer tonight, but I would like a response. I'd like to know what the city of Tom Water's current state of deportment is relative this, relative to this issue. And I thank you for the time to be able to speak to you tonight.
Great. Thank you very much. And not sure how I got turned off. Next item is, uh, publicly, or sorry, is consent calendar. Uh, do I have a motion for the consent calendar? Councilmember Dahlhoff.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Dahlhoff, seconded by Councilmember Agabi. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right. With that, we have approved minutes for our special council meeting on April eleventh. Approve the minutes for a city council meeting on April eighteenth. Uh, payment vouchers, ordinance number O twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine regarding, um, transportation network companies. Uh, resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven. Uh, delegation of signature authority for grant documents related to Somerset Hill Fish Passage Barrier Removal Design. Uh, also storm capacity grant agreement with the Department of Ecology Amendment One. Common interest joint defense agreement with, uh, Olympia. Thurston County Media Operating Agreement Amendment Number Two. And reappointment of several individuals, which includes Bill Kalapa the second for the Board of Parks and Recreation Commission. Um, David Bills, Brian Reynolds and, uh, Seth Paul uh, to the Lodging Taxing Authority Committee. Uh, and then also a heritage tree nomination. So those were all the items that were taken care of with the consent calendar. So, uh, next is council considerations and it's ordinance number O twenty twenty-three dash zero zero eight. Amending Title Two of the Tom Water Municipal Code, adding Chapter two point five four, general guidelines for advisory boards and commissions. And the semi-retired, uh, city administrator, John Doan, will, will be presenting that. Thank you. Go ahead, John.
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this item comes from staff and has gone through the General Government Committee and has the recommendation of the committee, um, for approval. Uh, it is an ordinance that would establish a process for the removal of any member of a board or commission or advisory group to the city task force, something like that. Um, for failure of that member to perform. Um, currently only the planning commission has something similar to that. And, um, we felt the time is right, not because there was a particular problem, but it was a good time to sort of create consistency, um, amongst the boards and commissions. Um, it also, uh, clarifies that members, um, are subject to applicable state and local laws, um, rules, regulations, and particularly, um, ethics provisions. And that's actually what drove this change was that we as the management staff were having conversations and doing ethics training and talked about, um, how ethics applied to our boards and commissions. And that led to this, um, conversation and ultimately this recommendation. Um, so staff recommendation and the committee's recommendation is that you approve ordinance number, uh, O twenty twenty-three dash zero zero eight. And I will also pause and do a shameless plug that we have a number of vacancies on boards and commissions. And if there are members of the public who are interested in serving their community and helping make it better, whether it's around Barnes Lake or working on lodging tax or civil service commission or planning commission, uh, we have openings, um, there and actually on a regular basis on other boards and commissions. And they can go online to our website to find out how to apply for those. So I would entertain any questions. Otherwise, our recommendation stands.
Any questions? All right, and, uh, Councilmember Althouser.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Just as, as Chair of the General Government Committee, you know, I, I agree with everything that John had to say. I thought that was a really great summary. This sort of scene struck me as, in terms of framing, as I, I would describe this as more due diligence than addressing any sort of emerging or pressing need. Just sort of makes sense to me that we have these rules on the books and have clear procedures, not just for the city, but also for the people who are on the boards and commissions. So everyone knows what the rules are. So with that, uh, I would move that we adopt ordinance number O two zero two-three dash zero zero eight, amending Title Two of the Tom Water Municipal Code, adding Chapter two point five four, general guidelines for advisory boards and commissions.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Althouser, seconded by Councilmember Dahlhoff. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, with that, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Uh, that was all of the items we had for council considerations this evening. Uh, next will be, um, our committee reports. And I will start off with Councilmember Dahlhoff, who ha, will do public health and safety.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Health and Safety Committee meeting for May ninth has been canceled. Our next meeting will be June thirteenth, where we will be discussing twenty twenty-two police data and, uh, use of force briefing.
Great, thank you. Uh, next item is, uh, General Government Committee and Councilmember Althouser.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee will be meeting a week from tomorrow on May tenth at eight AM. We have three topics on our agenda. First is, uh, regarding a letter of commitment for the Franz Anderson Project via the Regional Housing Council and our commitment towards that project. Uh, we'll also be discussing tree and vegetation preservation regulations. And finally, the Bush Prairie Habitat Conservation Plan Phase Three, which will be about a service provider.
Great, thank you. Uh, and then Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthout is, uh, absent tonight, uh, on excused absence. So, uh, Councilmember Althouser.
Thanks, Mayor. And our May fourth meeting this coming Thursday has been canceled. So our next meeting for Public Works is May eighteenth, where we will be discussing, uh, the off-site lease agreement with SPSCC again, as well as the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program.
Perfect. All right. Uh, next item will be the mayor city administrator report. Uh, so John, are you going to be doing, providing that?
I don't have anything to cover this evening.
All right. So, uh, I do not have anything either. That's just amazing that we don't. So the next meeting we have was just gonna be full of it. So, um, we will though, uh, go now to council member reports. And if you don't mind, I'm going to start in Zoom. So, uh, Councilmember Jefferson, uh, sorry to catch you off guard. Are you able to give your report?
I'm ready. I'm ready, Madam Mayor. Okay, on, um, eleventh of April, I attended the Thurston County Board of Health Meeting to represent Tom Water Hopes and accepted the proclamation for prescription drug takeback. This is to help build awareness for safe disposal of medications. On the twelfth of April, I attended the, uh, Tom Water Hopes Coalition Meeting. And the main topic was discussing the cost of upcoming training opportunities. What do we want to prioritize and talked about our annual briefing to the community? Who do we invite? What to discuss, the venue, location, and how to get people and leaders interested to, to come onto our coalition and to just make it exciting. On the twelfth of April, I also attended the mayor's meeting with our seniors at the senior center with Councilmember Schneider. Very friendly group, and I met many friends over lunch. I was invited to attend their annual chili cook-off and barbecue rib cook-off, uh, which I planned to win. I was told that Councilmember Schneider won best chili last year, so I realized that the competition is tough. On the eighteenth of April, I attended the Olympian Beyond Meeting. We discussed two upcoming community listening sessions. Uh, they want to talk with stakeholders to see how we can serve them better. Uh, on the twenty-seventh of April, they had one in Tenino. And on the second of May, uh, at Thurston County Economic Development Council. Our annual meeting is also on one June at the Hands-on Children's Museum. Nineteen April, uh, EMS Committee, we met and we are still waiting to get everyone together, prosecuting attorney, budgeting office, county manager, to fix that budgeting issue that we had. Um, it won't be on the ballot in August because we would have to have it done by twelve May, the deadline. And we are not moving to that date, so still getting everyone together so we can discuss this. Finally, when we last met, um, Councilmember Dahlhoff mentioned, and we know that our seniors, um, it's challenging for our seniors with rents increasing and there's food instability out there. So we talked about the little food pantry and how can we get our seniors access to food? And how do we decrease the, the stigma of needing food? Well, I went out and I met with our friends at Thurston County Food Bank. And I found out that there is specific things just for our seniors, sixty years and above. So it's called the Commodity Supplemental Food Program specifically for them. They can get forty pounds of food a month, variety of good nutritious food, canned food, vegetables, dairy products, pastas, just the foods that we need to be healthy. Um, I ran into a senior the other day and I was just speaking about food insecurity. And she said, Angela, I used to get two hundred dollars a month to help with food. That was recently cut. Now I only have twenty-nine dollars to pay for food. So I told her and I gave her phone numbers. I said, I want you to call this person at the food bank. And the good thing is if they can't drive and then there's volunteers at the food bank to bring them this food. Uh, so let me just give you some specific, real quick, Mayor. Participants must be at least sixty years of age. IDs needed to show proof of age along with proof of address. Any recent mail and assigned participant agreement. This is self, you're, you're, this is self-reporting. So you determine if you need the food. The household size, annual income eighteen thousand, monthly income fifteen hundred and eighty dollars. Again, self pickup at the Thurston County Food Bank. They can designate someone to pick the food up for them, or they can request for it to be delivered to their home. They can call the food bank. I have names for them, Dean and Rebecca at the Thurston County Food Bank, three six zero three five two eight five nine seven. Give them a call. There's food out there for the community. If you need food, just please, please, let us know. Let the food bank know and they're ready to just help you out with food. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Great information. Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you. Angela, can, can you say that phone number one more time? Once is not enough for a phone number for seniors to call for food.
You're unmuted, Angela.
Yes, the number is three six zero three five two eight five nine seven. That would be Dean or Rebecca at the Thurston County Food Bank. Also, there, there might be some seniors that are not watching this program. So, um, city administrator, I'm working on a flyer right now. Is it possible for us to put this information in the mail so that when they get their monthly bill, they can have this information? And can we post this to our, our, uh, city website, if not city website, our Facebook page? Because I'm sure that there's other families out there that could use this food.
So when you get the flyer, would you send it to us electronically? And then we'll, we can look to see where we can, where we can distribute it. Those are all great suggestions.
Okay, thank you. Joan, did I answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And I'm so happy that you followed up on that and brought that here tonight. As you can see, Angela's been very busy since our last council meeting, therefore I didn't have to be. Um, so, um, I want to report just two meetings and both of them, uh, were related to the Regional Housing Council, which Councilmember Althouser will give a report on. And that's my report.
Great, thank you. Uh, all right, I'll go now to Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have nothing to report at this time either.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Agabi.
So on the twenty-sixth of April last month, I attended the EDC, uh, meeting.
Your microphone closer.
The, um, EDC, um, meeting. And, um, so majority of the new business, uh, I looked, I looked at, uh, time about forty-five minutes or maybe thirty minutes. Was, uh, discussing a capital more triangle development. So if, so the capital more downturn, my understanding is that there's gonna be some major, major, um, rearrangement at that more, that more, uh, more area. And most of our discussion was on a parking lot and, um, so this is just still in draft, so there, there is nothing concrete yet. The, uh, staff from, uh, city of Olympia presented, uh, information. They have, uh, they proposed three options or they have three options, uh, three alternatives relating to how parking lots are going to be, um, allocated or moving, moving forward. So I can't really tell you which is which because there's none, none of the chosen yet. And there's, uh, multiple choices within each category. So, and that is that. So moving on to a very, very, uh, um, serious issue. The, uh, Joint Animal Services, uh, Committee yesterday, we had a meeting yesterday. And, uh, a week before yesterday, there was, uh, a resident, I believe in, uh, city of Olympia there about that, uh, had called the, um, shelter for them to come and, and help take some animals off, uh, she was renting and she had close to like about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty cats. Yes. So, most of the cars were, uh, uh, unkempt, um, feces and dead and what have you. So the shelter right now is going through a crisis. They have, uh, taken all this animal. Uh, according to Sarah, the center director, they're still, they want, they're going to go back in there and try to see if they can trap ten more cars that they are not able to trap. So thus far, what they're trying to do is find homes for all those, uh, animals. They have gone as far as, uh, Goyserbo in Seattle to see if there's, um, resource that can help house, uh, those, uh, stray, uh, those cats. And then, um, the building itself is go, also going through a crisis. That building was built, uh, way back when. And, uh, the building was, for the purpose of which the building was, uh, built, it's not being fulfilled because there's been a lot of, um, the, you took, uh, plumbing is, uh, it's an issue. The building service is an issue. Kages are an issue. So, um, they, um, they, the city of Lacey, uh, commissioned, um, the, uh, their capital improvement, um, their capital improvement process had taken a look at the, uh, shelter. And, uh, what they are hoping to do, uh, one for the, uh, all the tradition that formed the, uh, Joint Animal Services is to, uh, take a look at the, uh, need and, uh, the analysis and see if there's a way that, uh, money can be raised to help, uh, fund a new, uh, facility. And we're talking about that, uh, we're talking, um, close to millions and millions of dollars, so. Uh, it is, um, so the thing I, uh, the thing I, I took away from my discussion yesterday is that the city of Lacey currently, uh, uh, do all the maintenance for that facility. do all the maintenance for that facility. Because of that, the the, the choice of finding new facilities limited to either Lacey or within that area. So we're saying what if you look inside county for a facility or an area, but then if you do that, then who is going to be paying for the services going forward? So there's going to have to be a lot of discussion that we're all going to have here in our chamber and across Lacey and Olympia going forward. But this is just FYI, every, everything is going to be formalized and then we're going to have to take a look at them. But the amount of money that they are talking about is in the millions.
Thank you. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Since our last meeting, I've had Thurston County Opioid Response Task Force, the Prevention Work Group, and it's great to hear councilmember Jefferson talk about Tom Waterhopes and that coordination. Because that's been coming up a lot. One idea is also do some tabling events, like at the Thurston County Fair coming up this summer. So maybe there's some collaboration with Tom Waterhopes having that space with the opioid response task force. I had the pleasure of taking a tour with our mayor last week on Lot, the Clean Water Alliance, which is like basically a big chemistry set outside, which is super cool. So I recommend if any other council members are interested in wastewater. Feel free to message me and we can schedule a tour. I also did a tour of the Lacey Maker Space with Austin Ramirez, which is pretty sweet. And so I sent an email with just random topics we talked about. You can like print logos and practice. And so, and even etching on glass and etching on signs and etching on table benches, right? And so we had talked about what would it look like for jurisdictions to have membership to that? And have multiple staff or volunteers go print things for special, it was just a ton of opportunities and ton of ideas. And so I really recommend the council members go check out Lacey Maker Space. It's not just for Lacey, it's for all of our community. It was really, really cool with even the three D printing, even parts. There's a company from Tom Water who came and talked about when he has specialized parts or can't find a part. He could have the Lacey Maker Space, either he could have staff there or he can have his staff go in and just print the piece for the equipment. Right? So you think about all of our infrastructure and the aging infrastructure and we can't get parts or labor shortages. Could that be an opportunity down the road? It was just super, super cool. And then I also met with the new board president Mark Stevie with the EDC to build a better rapport, better relationship. And I know Mark, because we were on Leadership Thurston County together. So it was great to hear what the new things, besides Peter, when he presents on the EDC of the things that they're looking to do in Tom Waterhopes, which is super cool. And then I have TCOM tomorrow.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Althouser.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Regional Housing Council on April twenty-sixth along with councilmember Kathy. There were no action items at that meeting, but there were two sort of informational briefings that I think were noteworthy. One was we received a briefing and an informational report from the lived experience steering committee within the RHC. That's a group tasked with kind of taking a holistic look at our system for accessing housing for people who need it, for our neighbors who need it. And looking at that with the lens of the folks who are actually on the ground applying for housing and trying to get it and trying to navigate these complex systems that we have in order to provide those services. So we heard from maybe about a half dozen members of the steering committee who offered feedback and insight and a lot of really good advice for making sure that when we do craft policies and do formulate responses to crises like the housing crisis, that we make sure that those policies are intentional and informed with, with lived experience in mind. And what they had to say, you know, I, I won't speak for you, councilmember Kathy, but it was, it was quite moving to be able to hear everyone's individual stories about how tough it is to find a housing unit that's affordable that you can stay in until you are back on your feet and the need for more permanent supportive housing as well. So it was a very moving presentation. I was glad we were able to, to hear that. The second item was an update on the Franz Anderson project, particularly regarding the permanent supportive housing units that'll be going in there. It'll be thirty-five studio units and thirty-five one bedroom units. They just finished the RFP process for development of that building and the Low Income Housing Institute received the recommendation for that. Construction of that will begin late twenty twenty-four and finish early twenty twenty-six. And we got a bunch more details about that project as well, but they'll also be coming to speak to us at a work session. So I won't give too many spoilers for that presentation at this point in time. Our next meeting for the RHC is on May tenth. And regarding the Capital Lake Dischutes Estuary, which is the other committee that I serve on, one of the other committees. I haven't given an update on that in a while because we haven't met in a while because we settled on the preferred alternative and it was up to the Department of Enterprise Services to work with the legislature on funding to achieve that. I am pleased to report that the legislature funded seven million dollars in the operating budget this year to take the first steps towards implementing the preferred alternative. Those funds will go to three different things. One is to make tangible progress towards the next phase of design permitting. Two, to advance the memorandum of understanding for governance and funding of a restored estuary to an interlocal agreement that will govern long-term management of the restored estuaries. That'll come back to us. And then three, to initiate grant funding applications for design and permitting. So still obviously a long ways away from that project being complete. But I think that getting some direct funding appropriated from the legislature is as strong of an indication or sign that we could get that there's support broader than just our for the project. Thanks.
Great, thank you. So our next item is going to be an executive session and John Doan, do you know if that's going to take fifteen or twenty minutes? You were, or am I already up? Okay, so I'm going to take a guess. We will do twenty minutes. And we will be back at seven. Or I'm sorry, at eight, eight twenty. We'll just do eight twenty and we'll be back. So with that, we'll recess. This is potential litigation pursuant to RCW forty-two point three oh point one one zero sub one sub I. And we will go ahead and be back. And so we will be in recess until then. Yes.